I need to order the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors for February 8, 2018. Role call, Mr. Reader.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have everybody join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda received, his proposal is amended.
Second.
Moved to the second any discussion, on favor of I.
Aye.
Full as motion carried. Other business, this resolution reconsider having Marcus and Milichap Institute of Supervisors provide a professional opinion and proposed plan of the sale for Country View.
It's all moved.
I would second it.
Mr. Chairman, I think you've got a resolution to reconsider here, and I think it needs to be made by somebody who voted on the, against that matter, so Linda and Frank voted for it, so I think it would take another supervisor to bring this matter back before.
Make a motion.
I withdraw my second.
I'll second it for general, for the purpose of discussion. This was brought back by, after looking at all the options and realizing we're responsible to all the taxpayers of Black Hawk County, I thought it necessary to bring it back for the purpose of discussion, so we could better under, get a better understanding of what this is, and that we are looking at all aspects, you know, we're gonna keep the Country View open no matter what, but we gotta look, we gotta be honest with ourselves and look at all the options out there to be, to do due diligence to any possibilities of keeping this open. You know, that we've had cuts from our CSS of 1.2 million dollars, we put 1.5 million dollars in, and it's just gonna be a continuing spiral, and then we've gotta some, do something to stop it.
And I'd just say, I haven't changed my position from Tuesday. The Country View is by and large a mental health facility, and everyone's constantly saying that we must do more to provide mental health services, but this investment's not gonna come from Trump or the Republicans in DC, it's not gonna come from Kim Reynolds or the Republicans in the State House, and it's not gonna come from the 21 other Republican-dominated counties in our mental health region, and so I think we're the ones that we've been waiting for, and if there's going to be an investment in mental health, it's not gonna come from anyone but us, and for me, it doesn't come from selling off Country View.
I think, you know, looking at the options of who may be interested in providing the services, maintaining the facility from a national search makes sense, companies that may well have resources to look at upgrading the facility, providing quality care, and I think it's our responsibility to put together those requirements if we do go out and seek, I'm gonna call them bids, but seek those individuals that may be interested in acquiring Country View to move it ahead in the future, that have the resources. That facility, not only do we need support for the financials to maintain salaries, wages, but it also needs a building in the future, you know, next five years and beyond will take significant dollars to redo it or rebuild it, as Supervisor Schwartz has recommended. So this, for the county to maintain it, it's gonna be multi-millions of dollars in the future to do it. I think we need to have, at least we need to look at what are the alternatives, if there is a company out there that can provide the services, and I think we have the obligation to look at that.
I'd reiterate what Frank said, and I know you've all heard me mention it last, at the last meeting too, we were told, I think, by other individuals that there was no market for Country View, and there wouldn't be any parties interested in it, and there was a contact made, I know to Bob Lincoln, saying the opposite, as well as this company telling us that there's a potential market for it, I guess we don't know until we work through that matrix and put the stipulations on it and see what we would like to have done out there if there is a market, but I do think we owe it to the residents as well as the taxpayers, and we are trying to do something, I think, for the staff as well, so I think that's important to note too. We've been trying to do everything we can to not close it, but if there's an opportunity for us to make it a better facility and assist more people with it, and an option that there are other interested parties that would do that and help us do that and have that in our community, I, I think we, we have to take and look at that responsibly, so I'm actually looking forward at least to taking the next step if that's what we decide today, and seeing if, seeing how, how that looks to us, and I guess if there even is possibilities out there.
Yeah. After spending, after voting Tuesday and after going in, back into my office and reading over the material closely and looking at stipulations that we are able to put on it, at least we do, we do have the option of going out, like you just, like the two previous people supervisors have said, at looking at options, and with the stipulations that we put on it, if no one comes forward, then we, we still own the, or we still run the place, but it, it would be nice to see things done out there that we, we can't do because we have other obligations in the county, and if we add that on to the taxpayers' backs, I think it's gonna be too much for them, to tell you the truth. I was at Amets last night, and several people come up to me and says, "What are you gonna do with that place? You've been a strong proponent for it." I said, "I'll be a strong proponent for it forever." I said, "I've been going out there for many, many years, and I love the people out there, I love the employees, but, you know, we gotta look out for the betterment of everybody too." And like you said, Ms. Layland, we are looking out for the betterment of everybody because we can put stipulations in there to do such, and if they're not met, we say, "We're not, no deal."
You might worry about some of the stipulations, 'cause it was encouraging here that we could put all these conditions into a potential sale, but the enforcement of those after the deal is done would, would mean that we'd have to go to litigation, and I, I question our, our appetite to spend those kind of, and ability to spend those kind of legal resources to enforce something that we thought was gonna happen that doesn't happen after it closes.
Well, I would feel that we have very qualified attorneys, or we can hire very qualified attorneys to proceed with that, and if we were for, have the opportunity to sell the facilities, we certainly could use those resources to ensure that they were living up to their requirements.
Did we, did we hire an attorney Tuesday?
We, we secured one. I think the answer is yes, we did.
And I think ultimately, the responsibility and why we're looking at Marcus and Milichap is because they have that wide resource available, know the clients and can provide the feedback to us on that history and knowledge of who we're dealing with, not just us leaving it up to us to go out there and look at those candidates, so bringing us very qualified candidates.
And to reiterate that Marcus and Milichap doesn't charge us anything if it doesn't sell, or if we pull, if we pull out at any time, there's no, no price tag on this until the sale is final.
That's true. So they are taking a risk with us as well, like I said, they're doing a lot of work up front to do this, so I certainly hope, I say, that's not the only reason I'm looking at it, is just because there is no cost to us, but I, I do think, yeah, they're taking a risk with us.
And looking at the, Frank, Mr. Maxman took time out of his busy schedule yesterday morning to go out for the meeting at Country View, and met with some of the staff and stuff, and I understand the feelings of the staff, and I gladly talk to any of them and tell them I'm behind them 100%, but we, like I've said time and time again today, that we've gotta look at all options, you know, and be diligent in looking at all the possibilities.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to go out and talk with the staff or whatever would help, but I said we need to consider some of those.
Anyone from the public like to comment? Come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please. Morning, Dolly.
Good morning. My name is Dolly Fortier. I live at 1455 Liberty Avenue in Waterloo. My daughter Julie Girl is a resident of Country View and has been since 1986 when we opened it as Country View. Of course, my concern lies heavily with my daughter, but also I know many of the other residents of Country View, many of them would have few, if any, options as far as going anyplace else. My question is, and perhaps this has been addressed, and I'm sorry, you know, I'm 81 years old, I forget things, but is there such a thing as a coalition of facilities like ours throughout the nation that could perhaps work together to get the supplies that we need, food, medical supplies and so forth, that we would be eligible for lesser rates? And these companies would, if I understand our system, could be eligible for tax credits and so forth for helping facilities like ours, there's got to be a good many facilities that are in the same position, I mean, even the for-profit companies are closing facilities, and we have a population that is growing older and older and older by day, not just me, but there are concerns among many people. I have a lot of people who speak to me as I'm out and about in the community, and when they call into the station to visit, we have strong community support for Country View, if that's of, of any value to you, but I'm hoping that we can continue to keep Country View as a local facility, as a county facility, rather than putting it out, we've done that before, it has not worked. We have enough brains in this community that we can work out something, if there's a board or a group that can be brought together to maybe explore those avenues, I would be willing to serve, and I just, my heart just goes out to the people that are there, like I say, I have friends that are there now, they have no other options, and we have people brought in here to our county because there were no options for them in their community, and these are people who are vulnerable. My Julie Girl, if she were to be placed somewhere else, Julie is 13 months inside her pretty little head, she has no option, she can't speak for herself, so mom has to, and other people throughout our community need to speak for those who cannot. So, again, those are just some thoughts that I've had, and if anybody would like to visit with me, I'm available anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolly.
I think we would have time to explore some of those options. We have one other facility in the state of Iowa that is operated by the county, we have met with them, I have not really seen an opportunity that we could, that would be beneficial to consolidate the two facilities together. The problem is, is that reimbursement from the
MCOs.
MCOs is about 80%, so as, whatever costs we have are inadequately reimbursed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Bill Witt, I think some of you know me. First of all, thank you, Dolly. I'm speaking on behalf of my sister Carol, who is also a resident of Country View, it's the happiest placement she's had in many, many years. Some of you might have heard me the other evening out at Central Middle School, because it felt like she's been hounded by budget cut after budget cut from placement after placement, and she's finally in a place where she has stability, she has great care, I've gotten to know many of the staff members there over the years, you would be losing that, you know that. If this, if Country View went into private ownership, you would lose that, that would be the first big cost that those new owners would cut, the salaries and benefits for the people right now who are compensated well for doing an important job well. But, more than that, I'm here as the immediate past Chair of the Board of Directors of the Western Home Communities. I've been on that board for 14 years, and, you know, we're no strangers to losing money on Medicaid reimbursements. We lose about a million dollars a year in charity donations, charity care. We're able to make up the rest of our losses because we do have private pay people who help bump up the, help, help us cover those losses, you don't have that. But, what you do have, and this is what surprised me, I called Chris Hansen yesterday, and I was surprised to learn that he and Pam Delagardel, whom I'm sure you all know, and Jeff Staggertah, who's, I guess, been working with you now for two or three years on, you know, Medicaid reimbursement models and so forth, those three have, were all asked to provide advice and consultation on how they might develop, help develop a new model for running Country View, for getting reimbursements, and for entering MCO, into an MCO. Mental health care has not been part of MCOs, we're seeing it with long-term care for the elderly, but we are not seeing it yet in mental health care, and so this could be a key new project, not only in Iowa but in the country. Now, again, this, we have in Chris, and Pam, and Jeff, we have some of the most highly regarded people in the country, not just in Iowa. Chris Hansen goes all over the country, providing consultancy and advice, we're also beginning, again, I say "we," but Western Home has been slowly developing a service component, that is, providing management and administrative consultancy and, on a contract basis for certain homes and facilities. So Chris said that they were looking at ways that they might be able to develop a new model that could integrate Country View into an MCO, and Mr. Maxman, we're not in an MCO right now, and MCOs are not responsible for the cuts in Medicaid, the state legislature is.
I understand that, but we, we are receiving
I know, and I know what, I know that you get, your compensation is based upon your cost reports of two years ago.
Right, and the state controls that.
That's right, and every year, there's a battle down there just to try and maintain that two-year look-back basis, so that's what hurts everybody on Medicaid reimbursements. But, I just wanted to say that, you know, we've got the best people right here in our backyard, and I hope that you will give them time and encouragement and support to see if you can develop a better model, and see if we can solve some of these problems without having to take the drastic step of selling Country View. I, I really have the greatest confidence, I mean, I've, I've worked with Chris, I've watched him in action for years, and you can't get any better than that, nor can you do any better than Pam, and of course, those two are pioneers in developing an integrated MCO model for long-term care as well as acute and post-acute care. So, please give yourselves some time, I would ask that perhaps you table this motion for 60 days, to see what kind of input you can get before you, you take the leap.
Well, I would, I would appreciate those individuals, and I have tremendous respect for both of them, that during the time that we would be looking at potential buyers, that we meet with them, we have the right to refuse any offer.
Yeah, well, my point is, on the one hand, you've got a broker who's working on a straight commission, on the other hand, you've got people who know that it can take quite a while to work through all of the kinks and the nuances and all the regulations that go in here, so, you know, you might have a buyer in 90 days, but you might not have a solid plan in 90 days, and then what happens? So, again
And I guess, you know
I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to debate you or anything, but I'm just saying, give yourself some time, give everybody some time, this is too valuable an asset for all concerned, for the stakeholders, we who are family members, the residents, the employees, and the taxpayers, to simply throw in the towel and say, "Yeah, we've had a lot of problems and we just don't wanna deal with it anymore." So, we need, we need your good consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Anyone else?
I encourage them to reach out to the board, you've had that conversation and none of us have, I don't believe, so I was gonna say it would be helpful to us as well.
Any other comments by the board?
Call for the question.
This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Oh.
White.
Yes. But, like Mr. Maxman said, we will be still looking at options, so looking at Mr. Witt's ideas, and we do have the opportunity to pull out of this at any time with Marcus and Milichap, but we've gotta do due diligence, as far as I'm concerned, and anyone that would doubt my commitment to Country View, I'd talk with them one-on-one, but I've got a longstanding commitment out there that has been going on for years, and it's hard to do this, but I'm, I'm looking at the patience too, I think, with, with open eyes, and some, like Dolly said, I've got a daughter, a granddaughter the same way as Dolly's daughter, and somebody's gotta be their voice, and I appreciate them being here today, but we, we've gotta look at the big picture, and hopefully, what Mr. Witt has said will come to fruition, and I'd love to see that happen.
Moving on to discussion, possible board action, Country View Care Facility.
Well, I mean, I don't know how much we wanna discuss these options right now, but I, there's been a number of things that have been tossed out there, I think one of, I think probably the most pressing thing that I think we should discuss as a board, and I was, are we going to stick with just having an interim director, and what we're gonna be doing with, with those positions, the leadership at Country View in the, in the immediate?
I think time will play out on that one.
I think if, if the Western Home has the ability to provide management, I think we need to look at that
Mm-hmm.
For the short term.
Absolutely.
I think it would be, I think it'd be an opportunity for them to look at the inner workings of that facility also, maybe help with them to come up with suggestions on how we can maintain that facility into the future.
Yeah, I would support that too, if they've got, if they're able to offer those services.
And hopefully they can, we reached out to some of the management companies, I know that we talked about earlier, when this first occurred, and didn't receive a very positive response, so.
Some said no, some said nothing.
Yeah, right.
And if that answers your question, that I'd say, I think
Going down the list, Chris.
And I think, you know, you've identified a number of areas.
Is that the list?
I think they're all worth, worthwhile of consideration, and I think we need to mix those in with, with evaluating whether we sell the facility, find a different resource to operate it, or we operate it as-is.
Okay, I know, I think one of the other big looming questions we have right now is the half million dollars that we're owed by the MCOs, and, and what direction we're gonna take, you know.
We do have a meeting on the 19th lined up to meet with, with representatives, attorneys. I plan on going to that, if someone else would like to take my place, I would encourage you to do so.
But I think we have two of you going, correct, for now? Was it?
Oh, that's, no, that's, that's the 23rd, the 23rd.
This was set up by Representative Solomon, and she didn't necessarily want to have multiple supervisors there.
That was canceled from an earlier meeting?
No.
No, that was her tour that was canceled, right?
No, they're supposed to be up in Des Moines, right?
This is in Des Moines, yes.
Yeah, that was, the original one was canceled.
Maybe they moved back, yes.
Yeah, she was gonna do it here.
You'd be interested in that? No, I, I have confidence in Frank representing us, I got no problem with that.
So we have a, our financial director, Susan is going to that, Dennis Coleman is going to that, and I am going to that, but we are going to have a planning meeting next Monday at 1:15, if any other supervisor would like to sit in on that with your ideas, I'd appreciate it.
You said?
Monday?
Monday, the 12th.
12th.
One, 13, 15, that's the time.
I think is the last thing I wanna highlight here is, I think we're running a larger deficit this year than we did last year, and it's because we haven't been able to reduce operating costs or staffing levels, but we've reduced census by an average of, I think, 10 or 11 individuals a day, and so I think that, I know that we're only, we're only reimbursing at 80% level, but if you're dropping the census but not dropping the staff, then we're coming at, you know, that's why we're seeing such a larger deficit this year, and I think that that is
I think there has been some adjustment in staff, and Carol Laurie is here, if you'd like to ask her about that, but there has been adjustments.
Because we've asked this question a lot this last year, and haven't gotten a right answer.
But you did
I think there's a shortage of RNs, is that correct?
And LPNs.
And LPNs, and that they can't fill right now.
And it's not because of the situation, it's just the situation overall.
Shortage through the area, state.
I guess if there's anything encouraging, it would be that we would have other players that have been mentioned by Mr. Witt that would like to explore alternatives, because they do play a huge part in this community in providing healthcare services.
Well, and we've talked about several things over the last year as far as looking at vendors and talking with vendors and working with them on costs, something like Dolly even proposed a little bit too, so I said the list is long, probably for the cost savings and, and cost options for us to look at, so I think that's something we can do.
I guess, I guess I would like to know, I mean, how drops in staff levels have correlated with, with the drop in the census.
Well, did I miss, here you, you said something about losing 10 individuals per day?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what the census is down, is 10 or 11 on average per day for the daily census.
But, okay, but we've been 10 overall. Overall, 10. I was gonna say, yeah, from 1:45 to 1:41.
Carol, you wanna address this? Are you able to address this right now?
I can address it over.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Good morning, Carol Laurie, I'm the Director of Health Services at Country View. Our census has decreased over the past year, just in general, and from my department, being the nursing department, we have actually changed our staffing pattern to address that. We recently did another adjustment. As you look at our decrease in our census, we do feel that there is a need for the change with the staffing pattern. Our biggest expense though is having the need to continue to have temporary agency to fill our vacancies.
Thank you.
And that's been a longstanding problem.
Dubuque has gotten away from some of that with, with creating their own pool of nurses, that's something Dennis said he'd look at, I know hasn't happened. I, I think we need to explore having our own pool of nurses that we could fill scheduled shortfalls that we know in advance, but also, slightly different from what Dubuque does, we would, I'd like to see them also be available potentially on-call as well, so that we're not relying solely on nursing agencies when we do have shortfalls, we can plan out the ones that we know, that there's gonna be a hole in the calendar, that's how Dubuque does it with their pool of nurses, but then also utilize that same pool of nurses as being who we go to first for calling, for calling folks up. for calling, for calling folks up. But, I know that's something we asked Dennis to look at, but, but.
I don't know, I think it's probably easier to look at, or easier than we think probably when you look at all the details involved. So, it probably will be a task that we could undertake, but it'll take some time. I think we'll have to work with the bargaining units obviously on that probably too, so.
I mean, for what I've heard from union people, like, they were under, under the understanding that, that we were going to be avoiding nursing agencies as much as possible. I think they'd be very open to seeing, to seeing something like those. We don't know until we.
Yep.
Anything else on Country View? Moving into discussion, possible board action considerations of all aspects of the fiscal year 19 Black Hawk County budget. I sent out a memo this morning to the 22 counties requesting that they leave the 1.2 million.
What memo will you know?
Well, that we got a meeting, the 23rd, they've called for a special meeting the 23rd. I don't know what that's all about, but Frank and I are going to that.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a, a community service board meeting, it's members of the community service that are holding a meeting with legislatures and.
They probably won't be making any decision on that then.
Yeah, till the 28th.
And I guess, you know, this, is the likelihood that this decisions on Country View are gonna be done in the next four months are pretty optimistic. So, I guess that's why I still believe that the amount of money we put forth for next fiscal year is the right dollar amount.
I did provide, um, uh, two updated schedules. The first one is, is what you had voted on, on Tuesday, 3 million additional for Country View and not using any reserves. If you want to still use some of those debt service reserves, that still makes sense as far as the debt service fund balance. You wouldn't be able to do this, you know, going forward every year, but if you wanted to lessen the impact this year and use 500,000, that is the next second schedule. And that, that just reduces the impact on the residential tax dollars of about $5 from about '22 to '17.
What's currently in there right now, 3 million?
It's the first page is 3 million for Country View and not using any reserves.
And that's part of that 8.52?
8.52.
Percent? Residential.
Residential, uh, it would be 6.01 on that first page. I'm not.
Maybe looking at.
Oh, you're looking at the tax rate?
Yep.
Is 8.52, yes.
For residential, we'd be going from a 6.1% increase to a 4.71 increase.
Yes, using half million of the debt service reserves.
I guess I made the motion to not use the debt services I'd be willing to put back in so that we'd only be taxing for the 2,500,000 for Country View. It would still be an increase of $17.22 per 100,000 of assessed evaluation.
So, where, if the community services back off that 1.1, where does that come from?
So, right now, that rough estimate I had was a little over 2 million, including the 1.1 for county social services and not including any capital improvements. So, you know, depending on what happens with county social services, I do think 3 million is a more realistic number. If we keep Country View, if we continue to run Country View, we will need to invest in capital out there. And then maybe 3 million isn't going to be enough, depending on what county social services does, but.
And we won't know until you get into the fiscal year and.
Right.
At the meeting on the 28th, the county social services meeting on the 28th, will they be deciding on this? I mean.
I don't know, I don't know if it's on the agenda. I can request it to be on the agenda.
I don't know if you want to push it.
Yeah. I think we should.
Maybe they'll forget about it.
Only but end.
No, they won't forget about it. They've got, Mr. Lincoln's got five things that he wants to cut.
Yeah.
I'd like to see us take 1 million out of reserves and, and lessen it down to 2 million from taxes.
So, maybe the 500,000 out of, of debt service and then additional 500?
Leave that there, or leave that, take that out. Not include the 500,000 out of debt services, take a million out of.
Take them.
So, you don't, we only be have.
Billion and a half.
Have a, you're talking about taxing for 2 million?
Yeah.
And not use any reserves to support it?
Right.
And then if we didn't have any changes, we're gonna have to go back into our reserves to pay the cost.
Right, right.
And Susan, if we, um, tax for 2 million for Country View, what, what does that do?
So, 2 million, but, but not using any reserves?
Yes. I mean, that's my understanding, Mr. White.
Right, right.
So, then that would bring you down to tax askings increase up here of 6.7%, increase on the residential taxes of 3.2%, an increase on the urban rate of 5.65%.
5.65?
So, been increased of $11.70, 3.2%. The rate increase 5.65%. Tax askings of 2.5 million increase 6.7%.
And that's $11.70 on 100,000.
On the residential.
I thought the request was to fund it at 2 million.
Right. 2 million with no reserves.
Right.
So, we would be increasing our tax askings because we had a half a million increase in our other operating expenses, salaries and benefits. So, the increase was 2.5 million total in tax askings, 2 million for Country View.
Right.
Half a million for.
If we needed to take 200,000 additional million out of the reserves next year after this, after, after tasking for 2 million, how strong would the reserves still be?
I have an open question because you don't know how FY18 is gonna finish in the red or in the black. That'll dictate that. And if you have.
Ballpark figure.
You don't know, we amended for, how much is left amended for Country View?
We've amended for 2 million and we've used 1.5 so far.
So, if we go over that half a million, then we're looking to pull more out.
If we use 2 million, um, and I actually, I, I need to update this estimate because these numbers have changed a little bit. But, um, using an additional 2 million, um, this was on a previous estimate, it shouldn't be too far off of there. It would bring us down to, to an unassigned of just under 10 million and it'd be like 25%. But I do need, those were older numbers, haven't been adjusted for a few things we've changed.
So, at the 2 million, the residential would be an increase of 2, a 3.2, what would be the dollar amount per 100,000?
$11 and something, $11.10? $11.70.
16 something?
The dollar amount on residential with 2 million is $11.70 increase.
Well, with the unknowns, I could support that.
Thank you, Mr. Magzman. I agree with you, it's all unknown right now, you know, with everything that's going on.
I think the burden would be on the board to find ways to.
Reduce costs.
Control those costs that the county has.
So, your ta, tax asking that would end up 5.65%?
The tax askings is up here, it would be an increase of 6.7%.
6.7?
The tax rates on urban would be an increase of 5.65%.
I'd make a motion that, um, we appropriate $2 million for Country View for fiscal year 19.
I'll second.
I think that's gonna leave us a million and a half short.
I think that'll put the pressure on, find other solutions.
You know, we've, we've concentrated a lot on country as well, we should be, because that's where the high dollar are. We may have to look at other areas in the county. The county departments that came in, they did an excellent job as usual. I think just about most of them come in and there really was nothing there. Capital, you can always take a look at. If we settle on this figure, that's two years in a row over 5%. We haven't been that nice since 2009. And that spiked to 6, I believe, because we had that local option sales tech with the rural area. So, we're climbing and I think that's too high of a number. I think there's ways we can get that down yet. Over 5% last year and another 5%.
I would agree that there's ways to get the cost down or that we've thought there have been ways and considered and tossed out, um, things to get the cost down and, and I guess the blame to me would fall on us that we maybe weren't more.
Exactly, exactly. The departments did their job, we haven't done our job. Unless, unless you're happy with a 5.65 increase for the taxpayers. I can't believe they're gonna be happy with it. I'm not happy with it.
I'm not happy with it either.
Last year, if you recall that budget, we didn't cut anything. And maybe the capital or the regular operating budgets were like they were this year. They did an excellent job, but there was some large ticket items and capital and stuff, I think we could have delayed. I don't know if there's that much in there this year to make a difference, but you know, sometimes it gets tough and we gotta make tough decisions rather than just automatically increasing taxes all the time.
I guess if, if we weren't funding Country View at the $2 million, we would have had a reduction in dollar amount for taxes for Black Hawk County residents.
But that's if we are funding it, so we gotta find other ways to save money.
Or, or, we, I think we have done the due diligence on our regular budget.
I don't.
Except for Country View.
Can't continue this trend.
Well, unfortunately, you know, most of the stuff, you know, we did, talking yesterday with a couple of the supervisors at different times and discussing the things that are in the budget, and we didn't all agree on everything, but we come to a consensus and I didn't hear any change from any, any of the line items. I, I wasn't in favor of several things that, you know, there's, one of the areas we talked about too was IT. We haven't done anything with that where.
The phone was one thing, 300 and something.
Yeah, phones, phones, and supposedly that's.
Do we need it? Probably. The one we got still work, yes.
Yes.
So, I don't know, you just have to make tough decisions because we are dealing with Country View, but we can't lay it all on their shoulders.
No, no, because.
And again, like Linda just says, it falls back on this board. And you got two choices. Try to find ways to reduce the costs or just simply raise taxes, simple as that. And we've done that the last two years, a pattern that we haven't been accustomed to since 09.
Well, I think the department heads and supervisors, I thought, brought us a very pretty lean budget though.
They did.
It was an excellent budget.
They did.
What we had there. I think we still have a responsibility to the taxpayers as well to provide services and I mean, I know we say the phone system works now and that was one of the major expenses, but were that to go down, I think we have an obligation to the taxpayers too, that those types of things don't happen if we can prevent them. So, that's a responsibility I think is there too. I, like I said, again, I point the blame at us and I know we're all willing to take that responsibility that maybe we weren't more aggressive last year, but we've talked about Country View for a year and many of the things that we've talked about in those cost savings, at least things we should be looking at, we talked about them and, and didn't really try to work with the staff and see if there were some of those maybe that we should be doing and maybe not. Like I say, the vendors, I'm hoping Dennis is coming to our next meeting. He had a meeting with Martin Brothers. There could have been some cost savings there that we could recognize and, and should be taking advantage of those types of things. Maybe there's not, but.
You know, some of these issues Chris brought up that we could try and what you just brought up, we just didn't think of these last night. They've been going on over the years, but they're being revisited again, but they didn't work. They simply wouldn't work. So, they've been trying different methods out there for years, even before Dennis got there. And now it just, it's getting worse because of the shortage of.
Nurses.
Nurses, the temp, budget's up because of the time off and it's just, everything's come together this time. And the key thing is, is the buildings, an older building and there's gonna be some major costs there also, so. But I, I accept that challenge there. I just think that we need to make tough ones then. And, you know, it's not the only department in Black Hawk County, there's quite a few. And sometimes you gotta cut back a little bit.
I think the, I think the real key to, you know, ultimately lowering property taxes unfortunately lies out of our hands right now. And that's gonna be meaningful criminal justice reform in the state. I think we need to be communicating that clearly to everybody. I think the Farm Bureau needs to get behind it. They're, you know, the big lobby concerned about property taxes in the state, they need to start lobbying about criminal justice reform. As long as we're spending a lion's share of our budget across the street, locking people up for nonviolent drug offenses, and we're forced to spend that money because we have to enforce these state laws, you know, that, that's the key to reducing property taxes is criminal justice reform in the state. And I think we need to take every opportunity to say that. Now, that doesn't change anything or help anything this year, but that's, anybody that's concerned about property taxes in the long run, that's the key.
Well, and we're very fortunate to have the reserves that we can even utilize. Some places aren't as fortunate and we've done, like I said, since 2012.
Over the years.
That's taken probably since 2012.
Yeah, we built that up.
Why do, why do we have the reserves there?
To use.
Just look at the chart and you can see why they're there. The way we've managed for the last.
And we're still continuing hopefully to manage in the same way. We're looking out for the taxpayers and trying to do what we can. It's why we're reevaluating this today, to reduce that number and still give us time to evaluate, I guess, some opportunities.
You know, we're using somewhat the same numbers that the cities are around here and you look at Cedar Falls with a 2% decrease from last year. And it's all doable. I somewhat disagree with you, Chris, that it's out of our, it's not out of our hands. We can change this today, right now. You just have to be able to make some hard decisions.
I don't think we can change where the lion's share of our budget goes, to the jail system.
No, we can't. I mean, whatever the law is and whatever we have to do, we have to do.
But that.
But the bottom line is we're still controlling these budgets.
Right. And Cedar Falls, I've lost them, I love them over there. They might have had a reduction in their services, but.
Sure.
I wouldn't want to have a heart attack in Cedar Falls and I wouldn't want to be, you know, have a house on fire in Cedar Falls because they're not providing adequate coverage over in that city. And so if you, if we want to not provide adequate services, you know, that's, that's how, that's how they're reducing their tax rate.
Did we ever vote on that motion?
There was a motion and a second.
There was a motion and a second, but not a vote.
Matt was, again, do you want to reiterate that motion was to put 2 million dollars in for Country View using no reserve?
Right, yes, right.
Thank you.
And we had a motion and a second on that, right?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Schwartz, second then.
All right.
You want to take a roll?
This, this resolution, please answer your name is called.
Magsman?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Okay, Mr. Lo, you got, like you said, you got some ideas on areas that we could look at?
We just pretty much set it with this. I don't know. If the rest of the board wants to look at it or if they're done with the budget or what. We've gone through everything.
Well, the particular items you mentioned with phone system, if we were to change that, were you thinking of?
Capital was down this year from last year and again, I think overall their budgets were pretty good, but the question is. If you're happy with this 5.65, I know I'm not as a taxpayer.
I know. I'm not either. But I would say then the burden's on the supervisors to get something done.
Cut it some more.
And, yeah, because that's projected for 19. This is what we're projecting for 19. And we're not at a time right now where we can do anything differently.
You probably won't be next year either.
Why not?
Well, it's what we said last year and we're higher than last year now.
Well, we've got a couple of options out here, I guess, that I'm thinking might be productive or produce some results for us or something. I guess maybe that's overly optimistic, but I'd like to think we're closer to some solutions maybe.
Anything else to come before us this morning? I'd like to schedule one for next Tuesday after the board meeting too.
Okay.
And have anybody bring anything back that they want to look at before we shut the door on it. I know somebody's got objections to that. Take a look at that phone system one more time if we want to and anything else. I'm not happy with 5%, increase, but like we said, we're giving services. We've got a service out there that no one else has and people in the community need to realize that. And mental health is a serious damn issue in this, this community and the state that's not being addressed. At least we're pulling up our bootstraps and at least trying to address it a little bit, I feel. I could be completely wrong. And like I said, when I go out there and see those people and the service that we are giving out there at Country View, I'm damn proud of what the service we are giving out there compared to other places. I heard a situation yesterday of a lady that was in a nursing home that was sent to the doctor's office and this son come in to look for her and she didn't even have a doctor's appointment. And here she was at a doctor's appointment that she didn't have and the nursing home didn't know where she was at. That scares the heck out of me. That won't happen at Country View, I guarantee you, because of the quality of people we got that are working out there. We've got a good bus service for them. We've got everything in place for them, which is, which should be a pat on our backs for everyone in the community that we are stepping up to the plate and taking care of people that can't take care of themselves. And anyone that disagrees with me, my number is 833-3078. They can call me anytime. I'll gladly talk to them and I'll take them on a tour. And, you know, when you think you got to, and I always tell somebody when I'm talking about Country View, when I think I'm having a bad day, all I got to do is take a walk or take, get in my car and drive out there and do a walkthrough and see the people and see how damn happy they are. Mr. Maxman and I were out there at 4th of July when they did the bell ringing and I was out there at Christmas time when they did the bell ringing and then they have a little Christmas party for them. And then one kid got a hat for Christmas, a hat, a baseball hat. And he swore to God he got a new Corvette, you know, and that's the type of people that they're happy with nothing. They're not getting a lot of extra. We're not giving them, you know, extra stuff. They get to go to a couple of ballgames a year. Thank God there's people out there that we collect money and we go buy them popcorn and stuff. Take care of them. I'm ready to close. Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close motion carried. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.